We will get ready. Christian's going to bring up the... Ready?
Yep.
Good evening and welcome to the 565th meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission. If you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber. And the chair reserves the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. I'd like to welcome all of you here this evening. First agenda item, roll call. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the roll.
Councilman Smalls.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Kish.
Mr. Welford.
Here.
Ms. Bonner.
Here.
Chairwoman Bettman.
Here.
You have a call, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Agenda item two, approval of the minutes from the February 12, 2019 meeting. We have each received the minutes. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Quillan. If you would please call the roll.
Mr. Welford.
Yes.
Ms. Bonner.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Abstain.
Chairwoman Bettman. Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item three, plat of consolidation application and resolution 19-02-PC, 14707 and 14731 Baltimore Avenue, filed by Packard Associates LLC. This agenda item also includes the public hearing on the application and the final action by the Planning Commission. I believe, Mr. Verro. Well, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members. Plat of consolidation application was filed on February 5, 2019 by Packard Associates LLC to consolidate two lots into one for Tower Plaza Shopping Center located at 14707 and 14731 Baltimore Avenue, Laurel, Maryland. Currently, there are total of two parcels entitled P-43 and Lot 5. The applicant is seeking to consolidate the parcels into one parcel to be entitled Parcel 8 for the Tower Plaza Shopping Center. The two lots combined are 238,025.22 square feet or 5.46431 acres. On February 27, 2019, the applicant in a cover letter asking the comments were sent to the City of Laurel Department of Public Works. The following response was received from the City of Laurel Department of Public Works. There was no comments at this time. On February 22, 2019, a letter explaining the nature of the application and advertising a scheduled public hearing before the City of Laurel Planning Commission was sent by certified mail to all contingent property owners. All return receipts were received. The file contains a certificate of publication verifying that this application and public hearing was advertised in the February 15, 2019 issue of the Prince George's Sentinel. The file contains an affidavit signed by the applicant attesting that its own sign has been placed on the subject property, as remain and shall remain until the decision is reached by the City of Laurel Planning Commission. Staff recommends approval for the Tower Plaza Shopping Center plat of consolidation with the following condition stated in the technical staff report. That concludes the reading of the file, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I have one. Just what is the advantage or for doing this? Or, I guess, purpose? What it said in the report is it's for future paving, but is there... I just didn't see kind of a purpose for why it would be done or needed.
At the moment, the applicant would like to do a parking pad for future tenants on that site.
Oh, so the site, I guess the way I read it was that it was going to be just a parking pad over there, not any retail or anything?
Yes, ma'am. It's just a parking pad. And the reason for it is the tenant believes for future retail, if it's on-site, with aid in accommodating the extra persons that may occupy that shopping center.
We have several people signed up for this agenda item. I would first like to invite the applicant or the speaker. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's Dean Packard with Packard Associates. My address is 16220 Frederick Road, Suite 300, Gathersburg, Maryland. I'm the site engineer and I filed the application on behalf of the owner. And the purpose was to overcome a deficit of parking that is occurring in the shopping center now, especially on the weekends. And, you know, the owner purchased the property next door in order to get additional spaces on the additional property. There's a requirement by the City of Laurel to consolidate the property. And the additional speakers that came with me tonight are some of the tenants and the landlords that wish to just support the fact that they need more parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant before I open the public hearing? I would like to open the public hearing, excuse me, at 7:06. Cindy Russell? Russell, welcome. If you would please state your name again and your address.
Right, Cindy Russell. I reside at 794 Fairview Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland, 21403. I am the property manager for Tower Plaza. I'm representing the landlord whose company name, which is Jordan One LLP. I have been the property manager of that site since November of 2016. In my tenure with the company, the parking has escalated to an issue with the new tenants that we've brought in that it's now hurting their business as opposed to providing for their business and are really looking forward to working with the City of Laurel to prevent that from happening as we all want economic growth. And I have several of our tenants here that just want to say a few words about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You, Quinn Lee, welcome. Did I pronounce that?
Yeah, yeah, you did it right.
Your name and address, please, if you would repeat.
Yuqin Li, so 8629 Saddleback Place in Laurel, 20723. I'm new here, so we are new tenant. And the parking space there is definitely not enough, not even close. And we even have a customer to read the review on, you know, the comment. They say, they give us one star because they say the parking space is too small, too tight. So, you know, I guess we really wanted to have it done, so hopefully it'll work out. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Bart Cassiello, welcome.
Bart Cassiello, 3277 Breckenridge Way, Reva, Maryland, 21140. And as you guys probably remember, I came before the board looking for an exemption because we wanted to move because there was not enough parking. And part of our conditions on staying was that they were going to, they had acquired this property and they were going to convert it to parking. Because on the weekends, on Friday nights and Saturdays, you know, there's two sit-down restaurants, there's a laser tag place, we have a car rental place, and parking is literally hunt and peck. And it is hurting all the businesses and it was enough to drive us, you know, to want to move at a large expense to do that. So I'm just hoping you guys will see the obvious need and support the businesses here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for coming out tonight. It's a beautiful night.
That's what I was just going to thank all of you for coming out. It's always nice to hear from people. Mr. Mills, I do not have an agenda item signed up for the... Did you wish to speak on this one? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item?
Madam Chair, if no one from the public, I do have a question for staff. I'm just curious, with the car rental facility that's there, is there a designated number of parking spaces for their rental cars that takes up space also in that lot?
What we may have to do, councilman, is look at the fold and see how it was approved. And then, once we do the research, we can get back to you on that matter.
I mean, I'm like most other folks, I do patronize that center there quite a bit. I have to imagine, however, from a management-owner point of view, having this kind of a problem is sort of a good one because that means you've got a lot of business coming into your center. Am I kind of halfway right? You certainly want to have this kind of problem versus an excess number of empty spaces where people are not patronizing. So I just mainly, because when I do drive in there, there are a number of, I presume, rental cars that are there, and I just wanted to know if there was a set number of spaces that were allotted to that. Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you. There's no one else wishing to speak? I will close the public hearing at... Oh, welcome, I'm sorry. The public hearing remains open. Your name, please?
I forgot to sign up. I'm one of the tenants also. I own a Big Bazaar Indian Supermarket.
Thank you. Your name, please?
Saurav Habari. Let me spell that for you?
Please.
S-A-U-R-A, B as in boy, H. Last name, P-A-B as in boy, A-R-I.
Thank you. And I'll just... Okay.
So ma'am, I own the Indian supermarket in the shopping center. We opened in mid-2016, and we've been getting complaints from our customer regarding parking issues, especially Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And from owner's perspective, the complaints have only gone up, and my staff informs me every Monday about the number of complaints that we have been getting. With the grocery store, you know, we have folks who come in, older folks, younger folks who are shopping, they have a cart full of stuff. It's very important that they're able to find parking somewhere in the shopping center, preferably somewhere close by, but if not, anywhere in the shopping center. And that, I believe, does affect our business, so I would urge you to consider our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, at 7:13, we will close the public hearing. And if there are no questions for staff or the applicant, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Wilson.
I would like to move to approve the plat of consolidation application and the resolution number 1902-PC for 14707 and 14731 Baltimore Avenue with the conditions as specified in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Bonner.
Yes.
Mr. Welford.
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank all of you that came out this evening to speak to us. Thank you very, very much and continued success with your businesses. You are welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but you're also welcome to leave if you like, so thank you. Moving on to agenda item four, amended MXT concept plan application number 891 and resolution number 19-03-PC, Vanduzen Road, filed by Strip Matter Land LLC. The agenda item includes a public hearing on the application and final action by the Planning Commission. Mr. Love.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commission members. The proposed ordinance number 1940 is to revise the conceptual site plan in the MXT zone for the Westside project located off Westside Boulevard and Vanduzen Road. The applicant, Strip Matter Land LLC, is seeking to reduce the retail area to 40,000 square feet maximum and include an additional 81 townhouses on the site. The property was previously approved for 200,000 square feet of commercial space. The current application is revising 16.9 acres of the Westside project with 9.4 acres of proposed new townhomes and 7.5 acres of commercial use. In January and April of 2013, the original conceptual site plans were approved by the Planning Commission. The Westside project consists of four phases. Phase one consisted of 484 multifamily units. Phase two consisted of 56 townhomes, both of which have already been constructed. The current application will be phase three of the project, and phase four is a proposed hotel pad site. The applicant conducted an updated traffic impact analysis which showed a reduction in trips generated. Staff recommends that the City of Laurel Planning Commission approve the revised conceptual site plan for the Westside property with the following conditions. Condition one, all construction shall conform to this ordinance as well as the final MXT plan as approved by the City of Laurel Planning Commission. Two, the applicant shall obtain final site and landscape plan approval for the proposed townhouse portion of the project from the Planning Commission. Three, the applicant shall obtain preliminary subdivision plan approval for the proposed townhouse portion of the project from the Planning Commission. Four, the applicant shall obtain record plat approval from the Planning Commission for the additional townhouse portion of the site. Five, the applicant shall obtain subdivision plan approval for each individual pad site within the proposed commercial area from the Planning Commission if applicable. Six, the applicant shall obtain final site and landscape plan approval for each individual pad site within the proposed commercial area from the Planning Commission if applicable. And seven, the applicant shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations in the development of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Before I open the full public hearing, I would like to invite Mr. Gibbs, the applicant, to speak.
Good evening, Chair Bettman, members of the Planning Commission, Councilman Smalls. Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices in Largo, and I'm happy to be here once again representing Strip Matter Land, the owner and developer of Westside. Seated the third row back is Mr. Rob, Strip Matter of Strip Matter Land, and their actual land development manager, Mr. Blake Eschrich. We also have our traffic engineer, Mike Lenhart of Lenhart Consulting, with us this evening. You know, I think a bit of history is in order here. I see many familiar faces in front of me on this Planning Commission. We started working with the city on this project in 2010, right after it was placed in the MXT zone pursuant to the adoption of the Subregion 1 Master Plan and tax amendment at that time, the property being governed by Prince George's County. We came in, we met with the city about an annexation because we were in the city's master plan targeted growth area for annexation, and so we annexed the property. Now, at that point in time, my clients owned 65 acres of land with owned MXT. The interchange, which we have, the beautiful interchange, was not... State Highway Administration came to us and said, you know what, we want 25 of your 65 acres because we need it to make this interchange happen. So we never went to litigation. We negotiated everything away with the State Highway Administration. They took all of our frontage, all of our frontage. And what we said to them was, you got to help us out somehow to get enough frontage to develop the property. So if you recall, there was the 19-acre school board parcel that was immediately adjacent. And so, as part of our negotiations with the State Highway Administration, they got Prince George's County to deed that 19-acre school board site to the State Highway Administration. The State Highway Administration deeded that to us. We then came to you. We annexed not just the original parcel, we also annexed in the school board piece, and we filed a rezoning application to rezone that to the MXT zone, and you approved that. You approved, you recommended approval of it, and the mayor and council approved the annexation and the rezoning. So now we were back, not to our original 65 acres, but to about 56 acres in the region. And we went through the process. We did a conceptual site plan. There were findings that we met every ordinance requirement to get a conceptual site plan approved. Now, crucial to remember in this process is that when we went through the original conceptual site plan, we have to have a mix of uses. Now, technically, you have to have two out of three use types in the MXT zone. And you could have, and I have done projects where we have 500 square feet of commercial and 600 multifamily units. That satisfies the requirement for a mix of uses legally in the MXT zone. But we went and we proposed up to 500 multifamily units, up to 80 townhome units, up to 200,000 square feet of commercial retail, and a hotel of up to 150. And so, we built 484 out of 500 multifamily units. We came in, we didn't try to push the envelope on the 80 townhomes. We did what we believe is a very tasteful development of the 56 out of 80 townhouse At the time of the CSP, we were forthright with everyone, saying, we're going to get as much commercial as we can. We think really this is a site that maybe we could get 125,000 square feet, not 200. 200 was a max. My client went out and entered into an arrangement with Roadside Development, highly respected, highly experienced retail commercial developer. They've done projects throughout the DMV, successful project. For five years, five years, they went to every grocery store anchor known to man. They went back two, three, four, five times. The retail world has dramatically changed, in particular with grocery stores, with the consolidation of ownership, with the mega corporations that now allow you to have your groceries delivered. We could not get a grocery store anchor. And the grocery store anchor is what made 125,000 square feet a possibility. We could not do it. We went over and over and over again. We got the same answer. Not enough rooftops out here for us to justify a grocery store. There are other grocery stores that we have, Aris Peter, Shopper, they're all closed. There was no market demand for a grocery. So after working feverishly all this time and keeping the city up to speed, we came in, we briefed the mayor, we met with staff, and we came to the conclusion that there was just no way we could make this happen, but we wanted to have a successful center. We have this vacant piece of land sitting here. So about six months ago, we invited all of the residents of the multifamily and the townhome to a town hall meeting out at the clubhouse on-site. I was shocked at the number of people who showed up for that meeting, standing room only in that room. We told them exactly what we told you this evening. And those people said to us, you know, we wish we could have a grocery store too, but we understand what the problem is, and we want something to happen out there. We want something to happen sooner rather than later. So we told them of this proposal, that we thought we could do about 40,000 square feet of retail. We had some extra land left over. Residential townhomes are a very, very hot market right now. I mean, NV did the 56 townhomes out there. They could not build them fast enough, and we think they're a beautiful addition to the city's housing inventory. So there was, at our first meeting, not one single solitary dissenting person at that meeting. We gave them Roadside's email contact. Armin from Roadside, the owner, was present at that meeting. He gave them his email. He said, please send me your thoughts and suggestions, and we're actively marketing right now. I think it is, I think I am able to say that there's a structure of a deal in place for a well-known pharmacy to go out there. Nothing else, do we have anything close to a letter of intent. But we have, we're working, and we think that we're going to be able to bring something very nice out there that is going to respond to the requests that the citizens made. After we met, we had that initial citizen meeting, we came back in, we met with the mayor again, we explained to him what had happened, and we said, we would like to move forward with this. And we, obviously, nobody makes guarantees, but, you know, we received what we believed was a response that would allow us to vote. We scheduled yet another meeting about six to eight weeks ago. It took place. You had a representation, representative from city government present at that meeting. Once again, packed house, once again. To our roll call, not one single solitary dissenting comment about the proposal. Proposal is this, what you have before you in the conceptual site plan, an additional 81 townhomes and up to 40,000 square feet of retail. We think we'll get 40,000. So with that having been done, we said to the folks who were assembled, we're going to go ahead and file our application, and that's what we did. And here we are, going through the process. With the utmost of respect, first of all, I very much appreciate the staff's recommendation of approval. With the utmost of respect to everyone, we meet every legal criterion set forth in your ordinance for the approval of a revision to the conceptual site plan. All these findings were made before. It's not that we're not having retail, it's just not as much. So with that having been said, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I hope I wasn't too long-winded, and hopefully, we support the staff recommendation. We have no objection to any of the conditions articulated by the staff in their report. And hopefully, you'll see fit to approve this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you'll stay there, Mr. Gibbs, please, for some questions. Thank you for the background. I do think it's helpful to those here, to those listening, and we have at least one new member that has not been here for all of the history of this. The 46 townhouses, how many are there currently?
Fifty-six.
And they are on how much?
How much acreage?
Because they look, they look like they're on more acreage than what's left that you're trying to put 81 on. That's what I couldn't...
The green is the townhouses. They're on much less acreage.
It is much less. It just looks so big compared to... And then, where, so am I looking at the green versus the purple?
Purple, green versus the purple. There's 56 on the green, we're proposing 81 on the purple.
Okay, and then, the 40 remaining, is that the peach color?
It is.
And the hotel spot is the burgundy?
It is.
Okay. Do you see difficulty, and I know you've had difficulty getting the hotel, because originally, many years ago, six years ago, the thought was the hotel was going to be the first thing there.
Right.
And now, with reduced retail, do you think it's just going to be even more difficult to get a hotel to come in?
No, we think, we think we'll get the hotel. Again, you know, that's one of the laments we get from the hotels, you know, not enough rooftop. And everybody keeps looking for a Conterra to have, and it keeps not happening. But, you know, we think there is a greater interest for the hotel now, and we think this is, we think this is actually going to help to have the additional rooftops and to have... And I might add, you know, the conceptual site plan is just a bubble diagram.
Correct.
But, but we have worked, in working with your staff, we are going to have, within the townhome portion, a major, major green area through the center, basically running from where Westside Boulevard ends, there will be a large swath of green going directly all the way down to the back where the retail is. But that's, again, that's a preliminary subdivision plan and a detailed site plan issue.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Gibbs?
Mr. Gibbs, will the, will the townhouses being located there in place of the retail, will that require a sound wall anywhere in that area?
No, we don't believe so. We don't believe so. You know, we meet the Comar DBA requirements. But again, we're a little bit premature on that. I mean, I think that's something that in your preliminary subdivision plan process is really going to be looked at closely, but we don't think it is.
In terms of just, again, I'm trying to picture size-wise, what the 40,000 square feet, the Royal Farms that's going in across the street, basically.
How many square feet is that?
How many square feet is that, do you think?
Armin, why don't you just introduce yourself, you're going to be on the record.
Thank you.
I'm Armin Spikele with Roadside Development.
Welcome.
The Royal Farms, when you look at that, it's really a much larger piece of land than you would normally have for the square footage of the building. So, the building might be 7,000 square feet, but they occupy probably over an acre. An acre would normally have 10,000 or 12,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're envisioning, you know, two or three pad sites and then a sleeve of retail commercial, which, and we're hoping to have restaurants in there.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gibbs?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gibbs, before you... I do. My questions are revolved around the traffic study. And with 80-plus townhomes proposed, I'm interested in hearing how the traffic in that area is going to be impacted. Now, I don't travel that area too often during the commute time. But on the few occasions that I have, Conterra, I think it's Conterra Boulevard, coming around the county is oftentimes backed up on the occasions that I've traveled through there. And now, we're considering adding 81-plus new homes. That obviously is going to have a traffic impact. I've looked at, you know, some of the numbers, but I'm really curious. Roadwise, is there any proposal to widen or to otherwise provide any kind of traffic control?
Well, we had said earlier on in the process last time through that we anticipated installing a traffic site at the intersection of West Side Boulevard and as part of, part of the base development of West Side. But, but, you know, we went through and passed the adequate public facilities test the last time through. Now, bear in mind, all right, we passed for 80 townhomes. Okay, so, we only did 56. So, take 24 of those, take those off the 81 from a traffic standpoint. Then, we passed the traffic test for 500 multifamily units, and we only did 484. There's another 16 units. And then, we passed the traffic test for 200,000 square feet of commercial retail. And so, the trips, and I'd like to have Mr. Lenhart up and explain this, but in a more sophisticated fashion, but the trips that were allocated to this project as a result of the guidelines that we have to apply resulted in many more trips that we're actually going to generate now. I'd like to have...
Good evening. For the record, Michael Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. So, there was an approved traffic study from 2013 for the original approval. As Mr. Gibbs indicated, the big difference here is that we're, instead of 200,000 square feet of retail, we'd be looking at 40,000. Retail is a very intensive traffic generator, much more so than residential. And when we swap out and we reduce it by 160,000 square feet of retail, even though we're adding in a net of, what, 70 or 60 or 70 residential units, it's actually a reduction of 98 trips in the morning peak hour and 736 fewer trips in the evening hour than what would be generated if we had a 200,000 square feet of shopping.
So, and I understand that. So, I'm interested in those folks who are sitting, you know, the numbers sound good on paper, but those folks are sitting car after car in a long line of traffic. And I respect your numbers. I've looked at them. But I don't know that that means a heck of a whole lot if I'm sitting in that traffic waiting to go up to a stop sign to go whichever direction I'm going in that area. To add to that, the number of cars that would more probably be a part of additional, additional homes there. And I know you do this all scientifically and all of that, and I've seen many, many traffic studies over the years. And I, again, respect what you do. I'm wondering if a traffic light is going to add to a backup of vehicles versus help really the flow of traffic. And, yeah, I rely on your expertise to tell us how that is going to...
It's timed properly and coordinated with the adjacent signals. It can be inserted into a system so that you don't, what you don't want to have is a signal down the street that releases a platoon of vehicles, and they come down, and all of a sudden, they're sitting at a red light. So, you can time them, you connect them, and avoid that type of situation. As Mr. Gibbs indicated, we, with 200,000 square feet of retail, we anticipated need to do a signal warrant study, and if approved by the city, install a signal. You know, I believe that that condition would still stand with, you know, at some point, signals warranted, be it with residential or the retail or whatever that is. That warrant analysis and have the same requirement.
So, during, and this is my last question, Madam Chair, Mr. Lenhart. So, during the town hall meeting that you held, did the residents, current residents, raise any questions, concerns about possible traffic issues?
I was not at the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I was going to say, go ahead and answer, but I also believe we have several of the residents. I'm not sure whether the residents of the actual current property, but that will be coming to speak to.
Right, right. The only, the only comment that I recall relative to traffic were, there were some folks who had said they would, they actually identified convenience store gas that they would like. Some folks referenced that and questioned circulation coming in off of Van Duzen and getting into the gas station, because if there was one, it would be out on the front. But in terms of just volume in general, I honestly do not recall that as being a concern that most people... The concern that most people articulated to us was, you know, they're tired of seeing that field sitting there, and they want something else.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would like to open the public hearing at 7:39. Mr. Mills, is this the agenda item you would like to speak to? Welcome.
Madam Chairman, Board, appreciate just being here. A lot of, I'm here, oh, I'm sorry, Jeffrey, yes, Jeffrey Mills, 14409 West Side. I'm a little, I'm a little struck. Sandy Ridge Lane, and that's Laurel Merlin. I'm just a little confused, because there were several comments made that would pertain to me and my whole community that we were never addressed. One was the information pertaining to the meeting about this project. We never received any information, not a postcard, not an email, and not even a door knock to state what was to be done. When we, when we were offered to move in this residence, we were told that this area in purple would be a shopping center for us. Grocery store, whole nine yards. I was telling my residents that it wasn't Strip Matter who sold us that dream, so we're not blaming them. We understand what they're doing, and, you know, build whatever can go there would possibly be nice. But we need some information. We would definitely like some evidence of the fact of whatever went out or did not go out. But we, as a community, had not received any word. The...
Mr. Mills, let me just ask you. You live within West Side?
Yes, we're in the green.
Okay, and let me ask staff, just, again, I want to make sure we're staying, we're clarified. The city did not hold any public meetings, is that correct? Okay, so this was something the developer had done.
Correct.
When we put this property, was, I'm sorry, tonight's public hearing, were all residents notified of this or just the signs?
No, they were.
Okay, so you did get notice of tonight's meeting, not advance? I just, thank you. No, no, I just wanted to be, make sure I was clear on, on the notifications. Thank you.
The notification that we received only pertained to this meeting through mail, certified mail. And there was a sign, actually, two signs within West Side Boulevard that notified us about this meeting. Anything before that, we had not, there was nothing that we received. Ryan Homes, who purchased from Strip Matter, they're the ones who sold us the fact that this area in purple, the whole area would be a shopping center, grocery store, no problem. That's a selling point, and it was a good one. We bought, okay? We're not blaming them. But what we are looking for is to not have 81 townhomes in this area. Basically, breaking it down into 60% of 81 townhomes and the rest, the 40%, commercial. Well, we can't even get 5% sold for commercial. So, there is a dream being sold here to us and to the board for 81 townhomes. And if these 81 townhomes would be built, then anyone, they could sell to anyone. And then, if they're not built the same way as the two communities, West Side and Avery Place, which is up on Van Duzen, that was supposed to have been the sister community for West Side. Now, if that's the sister community, and they want to put 81 townhomes here, you know, that's, that's too much. Now, they said that, that West Side was passed for 81, it was passed for 81 townhomes, but there were only 56 built. I could just imagine, and we could just imagine, how small these townhomes would be if you put 81 townhomes in this purple area. And if it's, and Ryan Homes at this moment, they have no knowledge of the fact that this property is being, is up for sale. So, we would be, it would be just a given to, to, to put 81 homes, even if Ryan Homes were to build at this, at this site. It's up in the air. So, we can't guarantee that, as a community, that we bought here for a purpose. And we don't wish to have our property depreciate. So, we, as a community, are asking to negate this amendment or single-family homes. You could possibly put, use the property for single-family homes, and I think that we all would agree for single-family homes to not have our property value. And as far as the traffic study, these estimations, these numbers, I'm a businessman. I don't deal off of just some flimsy numbers that I can just grab out the air. It has to be proof. And so, there's, there would have to be a traffic study done. There would have to be, well, as far as a hotel, in which was the hotel was supposed to be there first, hotel is coming in for who? We don't need a hotel.
No, the hotel, no, the hotel was part of our master plan when we approved it six years ago, and it was for the city and for people coming off of 95. It's, the city is a very desirable location in terms of travelers. And when you travel, you want somewhere convenient to go off and things like that. So, that really was the city's view and the commission's view that there would be a hotel, residences, and retail. So, if I could add, one thing I didn't do is normally, we, no, no, I don't want to cut you off because I did not set a time limit, but normally, we have a three-minute time limit. So, if I could ask you, you have notes, please continue if you could wrap up in about a minute. So, I didn't tell you that in advance, so please continue.
Well, as far as, as far as no grocery store, no one wanted to come, then we have to look at another structure as far as a commercial site. Because even if you, if you put single-family homes, townhomes, which we're not asking, we're not asking for, please, we're not asking for townhomes to be placed in that area. But there are other companies, like, I mean, what's wrong with two hotels? If you, if, you know, if you, if they went out and sold to, you know, to hotel companies or, you know, anything else. So, I just, I didn't want to take, you know, too much time, but we're gracefully asking. We don't want 81 townhomes.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up, but I do see that there are several people. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Please, if you would come and state your name, and if I could ask you to stay within a three-minute time limit, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your time. My name is Moon J. Pho. I work with Mr. Mills. Well, I'm sorry, my address is 14203 West Side Ridge Lane. I'm also in the 56th unit of townhomes that already completed. I work with Mr. Mills. I'm president of the board, West Side Ridge. I do appreciate Mr. Gibbs' history of how the development went, because that does give us context. I will say, we don't have a clubhouse, so the clubhouse meeting could not have possibly been at 56 Townhomes, because we do not have a clubhouse. So, it must have been with the renters of the apartment complexes behind us. And while their opinions are valuable, they're not invested. They can get up and move anytime they want to move if things become inconvenient for them. And I'm not saying we can't sell, but we are invested. We're invested in the property value. We're invested in the city of Laurel. I just ask the board to just sort of consider the foresight of things and how things have gone. So, it seems as though they've, you know, developed this mixed-use plan, probably because some other things have fallen through, like, I guess, the fashion center, proposed fashion center at Conterra. I don't know if it's completely fallen through, but maybe it's not moved as quickly. That slowed down some of the retail propositions that were there. But if you're going to put 81 more townhomes, you know, as you mentioned, with the plot of 56 that already looks like a lot, if you're going to go put 81 more townhomes, not only is it going to be crowded and likely devalue our properties, you got to think about all the kids you're going to have there, all the people you're going to have there. Like I mentioned, we've got five dedicated parking spaces, aside from just our driveways, because we do not technically allow street parking, just, you know, for value of the property and for safety reasons. So, we only got five dedicated parking spaces, one fire lane. You know, think about the strain that that's going to put, you know, additional strain in terms of, you know, you guys' other facilities you provide to the community, schools, you know, your fire department and all those things. And I understand what the developers are doing. They're not our enemy by any means, but how is that serving the people that you're going to bring in? If they can't, if they're not able to sort of secure the retail spaces they like, perhaps a school, perhaps a community center. But how is bringing in 81 more homes? And I do understand the traffic study. You know, anyone who's educated understands statistics and numbers. But I think Mr. Smalls made a very good point when he talked about, okay, well, what about, and I think that's why people elect you guys, a point whatever, to sit in charge, because you have that sort of everyday experience of a citizen of this community, and you know what it's like to sit in the traffic. If you're going to build a, I understand why developers tend not to do it, but if you're going to build 81 more homes, build another, you can have another mode of egress. build another, you can have another, uh, mode of egress and ingress, have another street. Now, yes, that means you're gonna be able to build less homes, but that means traffic will flow easier because you, everybody won't be depending on, uh, Van Dusen and West Side right there to get in and get out. Um, I, I do think that if this is going to be approved, there's gotta be more conditions. I mean, another mode of ingress and egress, I mean, one way in, one way out is not sufficient for the number of homes. Because look at it in the long run, if they've come back to you now a couple of times and reduced the retail space, they're gonna come back to you again and tell you they can't sell the retail space again, and they want to put more homes. And you just end up with an overburdened community. Consider a school, consider asking them to do a school, consider asking them to do a community, consider asking them to do something that is gonna help the new citizens of Laurel that they're gonna attract to that community and help keep the property values high. That's good for everybody here in Laurel.
Thank you. Let me ask you a question. You said you're the president of the board of,
of West Side Ridge, um, homeowner association, so that for that fifty-six townhomes, now we don't, our homeowner association is separate from the, um, single-family houses that are in front of us and also separate from the new Avery Place that's.
And did you choose to be separate or did the developer do that?
The developer.
And Mr. Gibbs, if there was townhouses, additional townhouses built, why would they not be part of that same, or would they be part of that same homeowners association? Does that make sense? Okay, thank you. That's just a question. Thank you very much. Oh, actually, let's finish the public hearing, we'll have you come back up in case there's any additional questions. Um, sir, I saw that your hand was up. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Jarro Karenovic, E J U R O, last name Karenovic, K A R A N O V I C. I live in West Side Ridge fourteen two one two, West Side Ridge Drive. First of all, thank you for having us. Uh, this is, uh, outside of my arena, I admit. Um, but, uh, and I've listened to a lot of the arguments here. Um, there are really two big points I want to say. One was the, really what I would call probably is a mischaracterization of this town hall that was had uh, in an event in an area where we actually don't have access to, because this is, um, leased space, and they have cards to get in there, so we couldn't have even attended, even if we got. The second, uh, point I wanted to make is that, uh, there was a big pamphlet, or not pamphlet, a banner outside on the Strip Meyer property that said retail space coming soon, was very large, there were pictures. So even though Ryan Holmes technically was selling the dream, Strip Meyer was supporting it. And that sign and banner was taken down just recently. And, uh, and, and although it was helping Ryan Holmes sell homes and fill that area, I feel like there's an ecosystem here that's very unhealthy for the citizens of Laurel.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Ms. Cohen, will the record take the spelling in the names and help create our list? I don't have a real good list here for speakers. Okay, thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Adrian Wilson. Address is one four three zero zero Ridgeview Lane, Laurel, Maryland. Uh, thank you for having me to speak this evening. I just want to emphasize the point that, number one, we weren't informed of the town hall meeting previously. And being in this community for the last past year or so, I've seen a influx of traffic, and things have really gotten kind of bottlenecked coming off of that really just era drive on Van Dusen. And in our community, everything's one lane every way, so, uh, a big influx of homes in that area would really complicate things. So we're, we're looking for a way to kind of mitigate that new development and more understanding and more input as what's gonna be put into that new space.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Alima Ali, one four four two seven, East Ridge Lane. I'm also part of the community. Um, a lot of my sentiments, um, are, are, um, as a president as well. Um, I guess my two main points are, the first one is having more homes is gonna make the community feel more siloed. Um, across the street, houses on the side, apartment buildings behind, those Avery homes. Having eighty-one townhomes, a community center without a school or a plaza or anything is not gonna feel as one. Um, and I think that was a, self, bring together, but having more homes, um, as the president of the, I also, um, mentioned, um, they may just come back. More homes, can't sell it. And so if you just have homes everywhere, nothing to bring the community together, I think that's gonna depreciate our homes as well as make the community feel even more isolated from each other. I mean, there's, there's the little center, um, line for the apartments, don't have access to that, um, and it's, it as well. So my first point is felt it's isolated. My second point, um, going to be in terms of, um, the meeting. I am not aware of health by developers. Um, I don't even, uh, remember being a part of the conversation of what was going to happen. And I think that, yes, residents have been very misformed and there's, I think moving forward, um, for us, we should have more of a, more of a, and what is going on, especially living there for nine, years. Um, for the rest of the, um, other, uh, that, I really, as well. Um, with this meeting, we did get certified mail. I saw a USPS truck coming and giving each person the resident mails. But on the developer's side, they have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
F fourteen three oh three Ridgeview Lane, Laurel, Maryland, two oh seven oh seven. I guess I, um, as well, um, agree with, um, Mr. Mills about, um, if you build these eighty-one townhomes, how do we know that they will be at the, um, price point? Um, the hours are, um, we have, you can build townhomes where you can go in one door, and then you see like, you know, five or six other doors, more like a, a, a building structure as opposed to like what we're accustomed to, um, with the, a townhome where you have your own drive in that. So I would be concerned as well that if this moves forward, what the, um, design of those would be, because I think that as well can impact the value of those particular homes.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Amber Okusaga, one four two zero seven, West Side Ridge Drive. I'm actually the first resident that was in West Side, so I was proud moving in, okay? Um, I was definitely sold the dream for real because I was coming from downtown Silver Spring. I was leaving Montgomery County, big advocate in the county, Montgomery County, and obviously I moved to PG County. I moved because I was told that this property was going to be a good investment. I was looking at Rio and Gaithersburg, and I was told that this area was gonna be that. Similar to, they said it's, we're gonna have Contare Town Center, similar to Columbia Mall, size of Columbia Mall. So I'm like, okay, it's my first time purchasing a home, and I'm like, okay, I'm just gonna buy in the community, I'm number one. My concern immediately when I saw this come out was, one, I wasn't notified about the meetings as everybody else was. I'm very, you know, involved. I literally just got off a plane from Jamaica, but I'm here because it's so important. And, um, the, my neighbors, we don't have parking already. And so one of the things that we were told was, when you have parties or when you try to do something, you're gonna have the shopping center, you're gonna have lots of parking. Another thing too is traffic. We already experiencing traffic from the, um, the apartments behind us. People speed, the roads are congested, but we were told that everything's gonna change because we won't have to leave in and out of the community. We're gonna be able to go to the store, we're gonna be able to get food from right next door, which allows us that live in the community to walk there, which would reduce the traffic. So not having that is definitely concerning. Also, I was the first person to try to sell my home already. This was a wake-up call because I'm like, I can't sell my home. Avery Place came, they put the, the model home back on the road with, that I'm in, with the model home, which affected the value of my, like, selling my house. So to build more townhomes, to build eighty-one townhomes is a problem in that area, just that pod where we are. We have to have something there for us to resell because right now I can't sell. I, 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 I can't make any money from the house, and this is devastating because I won't, we can't, we won't, we won't be able to sell our properties. Because with the Avery Place that's down the street, already outside the community, that's supposed to be a sister property, which we're not connected to, it has affected the value. And so I think that's the only thing I have to say. Um, the only thing that I, I also am concerned about is the price point because I found out that several people in the community, their loans didn't even get approved when they sold the homes because the price point was too high. So I already feel that we were kind of sabotaged. And we were told, okay, we're gonna be able to make the money back from being in a community that has a, like restaurants, grocery stores, something like that to bring our value up. So eighty-one homes, much more traffic, more value lost, I feel trapped.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Before I close the public hearing, I'd like to invite Mr. Gibbs to address some of the questions that have come up.
Surely, um, first of all, let, let me just say this, I was at both of the meetings. There were representatives and owners from the townhome community at both meetings, right? These folks may not have been, but we had townhome ownership represented at both meetings, both. Um, relative to your question about the HOA, uh, they have their own HOA at this point. Um, for the new townhomes to be part of that HOA, there would have to be an amendment to those HOA documents. Uh, certainly, we, we would have no objection to that being done. Um, but, but current HOA would have consent to that. Um, now, Avery Place has nothing to do with West Side. We didn't mark, we don't have, we don't have anything to do with Avery Place. That is, I, I believe, part of the, what was Avalon Project, uh, where they were gonna do an assisted living, and then they came back in and, and asked you to change that for them. That's, that's nothing to do with us. That's not our sister project, it's not a sister community. Um, we had fifty-six townhomes, eighty approved, fifty-six that were built. And it's West Side, has nothing to do, there is no sister community. Um, there will be forty thousand square feet of retail. There will be stores, will be restaurants, not like there won't be any retail whatsoever. Um, and my client didn't try to do any kind of a bait and switch. Been five years trying to market a bigger retail opponent. And, and we cannot do it. It will not happen. We think we can do and we will deliver forty thousand square feet of retail, but we cannot deliver a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of retail. We have, we have tried. So, so, so the, the option is this, I mean, do we build the forty thousand square feet of retail, which we can do tomorrow? Because we already have that approved, we just have to file a detailed site plan and then leave a hole in the donut? Because we can't get anything else in there? Or do we have a complete community? You can't, the, in, in terms of the sizes, that purple area is double the size of the green area in Avery. It's double, okay? So the concept that you're gonna have smaller, uh, townhomes, smaller lots than what these folks have, that's just not correct. And you have control of that. We have to come in with a preliminary sub plan that's gonna show the sizes of all of the lot. We have, we're, and we're gonna come in with a detailed site. We can tell you that those eighty-one townhomes are gonna be equal or better to the fifty-six that are built, but you control that, you control the architecture, you control the building materials. I mean, the, the builder is gonna sell for the highest price that he or she possibly can because that's the capitalist system. Um, so, so we see residential here that will be equal or better to what's out there already. Um, when we came in and planned this community, we proposed a two hundred and fifty, uh, foot right-of-way for West Side Boulevard. People were saying to us, well, why are you doing that, such, such a big road coming in? But we knew that we wanted to have sufficient access and circulation to get everything into this community and everything out. A hundred, we have two lanes in and two lanes out with the median. That is, greatly exceeds what's needed to serve the square footage and the number of units, uh, in the West Side community. So, uh, and, and I mean, you know, we're, we're, I mean, we're not pulling traffic numbers out of the air. I mean, we, we've used the methodology that we're required to use. We passed APF, you know, we, we were here before everybody else. We, we, we passed APF back in two thousand thirteen for many more trips than what this was. So, I, I mean, we, we, we've used the methodology that's required, your staff has reviewed it. And, and the only other thing I'll say is this, in terms of, in the M X T zone, you don't have density in sense of units per acre as you do in Euclidean zone. The M X T zone operates on what's called floor area ratio. And, um, ours that we have is a one point four F A R. We are way below that F A R limit. So we're not cramming anything into this property, we're not meeting the theoretical maximum that is permitted in the M X T zone, we're way, way beneath. Um, and, and again, you know, with, with the utmost of respect because we, we view ourselves as partners with the city, we've worked together since, uh, since two thousand and ten on this project. But we're not in here asking to do anything that's not permitted. We're not asking for some conditional approval of a use that's not permitted. Townhomes are permitted as a matter of right in the M X T zone. You know, we have, we meet the required mix of uses. We have satisfied, as your staff agrees, every single legal criterion in the M X T zone for the approval of a conceptual site plan. You've already made all those files. So all we're doing is changing the mix a little bit to, to, to meet the reality of our life. We, we would be happier if we could do a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of retail, and we just can't. And we tried so, so hard.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right. At eight oh six, I will close the public hearing. Under two minutes, please.
If they could produce a, uh, a, a written document for every meeting, there's, there's a sign in list. If they can show us one, uh, member of our community that was at that meeting, please build your houses. If they could produce one.
That's okay. I, I understand where, what you're saying. And, and again, I would think if there's a homeowners association, I would have hoped that the invitation would have gone to at least the, the leadership of the homeowner. But, but again, that's, right now, that's not what's before us, and you.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, just stating that.
Okay.
But the, the, uh, the apartment unit that's behind us is, um, is renamed as Duval, and they, they house four hundred and fifty apartment units there. Where these people who, um, have, um, I guess friends of their residence, they park in our neighborhood, and they walk through our, our commu, uh, our houses, you know, the backyards, to walk into the apartment units, okay? And there's, if you wanna add eighty-one more units, we just don't have the room for that, okay? Um, right now, our community is like a dust ball. Because now that all of that land is, the trees are cut down, all of that, that, um, dirt is blown into our community. Um, us, the, the car wash and the water bills, we can prove that, okay? Um, if you put eighty-one townhomes in this area, the sixty percent of the two hundred, uh, two hundred thousand square feet, um, that right there, who would want to live in the sixty percent, uh, I'm sorry, the forty percent and live like how we're living right now with dust just blowing into our houses, blowing into our cars, right? No one wants to move into that. So our suggestion is just use the whole lot and, 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 and sell it to a developer who could build single-family homes there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if, if I could make just one statement, um.
Councilman Smalls?
And perhaps a, um, recommendation. I'm, I'm bothered by, uh, the fact that we have so many homeowners, uh, who have come out and said we didn't get notification. And, and I do agree with them that, uh, this impacts their lives. They live in that property or around that property. Uh, I do understand, Mr. Gibbs, that by right, your client has the right to build townhomes on that property and has been given the. your client has the right to build townhomes on that property and has been given the approval to do so. I, I would expect, having worked with you and your client for a number of years, you stated back 2010, and I've known you more years than that, that you would at minimum give these residents an opportunity to meet with you and on, you know, between you and them, talk out. They have some concerns. And I think to try to kind of just brush that aside is not fair to those folks who have invested into that community. Whether the commission, I don't have a vote, but whether the commission decides to move forward with this or not, I think those homeowners who all have said they didn't get notification and, you know, who knows for what reason deserve an opportunity to hear what you presented at those two earlier meetings. I, I think they deserve that. When you mentioned about the wide roadway, as I recall, and I was on a council in the planning commission when all of this was, was being discussed several years ago, that there's only one allowed ingress egress for that site, if, if I'm not mistaken. So, there was a comment about another roadway to, to get in. It's landlocked. There was just no other way other than what's presently there. So it made perfectly good sense to make a very wide roadway to get in and out of that property because there's no other way. I just wanted to state that for the record. I think Councilman Wilson, maybe you were on the council then?
No, that was after me.
Okay. But, but the point is, and, and the real point to, to my comments is that I would just ask that you really consider spending some time. And if there's not a community center where such a meeting can take place, I'll talk to the city administrator and see if it could be held here in council chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smalls. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, let me, let me just correct one thing maybe, or maybe I misunderstood you. The, the, they have the, they had the right to build an additional with the original mix under the concept. Once we finalize the thing, that's when they have, that's the reason they're back in front of this body. So they currently don't have the right to build these 81.
Not the 81, no.
Just want to make sure. It's a nuance, but I think it's.
But it's right. Townhomes are allowed. That, that.
Right, but under the concept plan or the, the final plan that they had filed before and was approved, the 81 wasn't in it.
The 81.
So they, they no longer have with me. So I don't want somebody to go away and think they already have the right. I, I, I feel, I, I think the, the residents here make really good points. But I also understand where the developers coming from. Right now, retail is tough. I think we all see that. And, and the number of Amazon Prime deliveries to all of our homes is probably part of the reason for that. I'm just as guilty as the next. A supermarket there, grocery store type thing, sure would be nice. But we do have a lot of grocery stores within just a few miles. I, I was actually shocked when Aldi's came in. I, I guess that they're in a different kind of a market where they can go and, and do that. But, but what I'd like to, you know, I don't want to see the property remain empty. So I think we have an issue. I, I also, I think, I don't know who said it, but I, I thought it was an excellent point. Is that if, if perchance we, that you could build additional homes, townhomes, you'd want some assurances that it would be integrated in the community. I think the woman in the back talked about siloed communities, if I'm not mistaken. I think that's an excellent point. This has always been my worry on the West Side is the siloed communities. And, you know, we've tried the best we can with the way that area is to, to make it feel like a whole unit. But the, the way the road surfaces are, it's really not. I know you don't feel like the ones down the street. And I think if, if, if I could suggest something of the developer, maybe to get together with this homeowners association and these folks and say, as part of building this, since it is bigger than the other, if you would get approval to do it, maybe a community center or some other things would help everybody's concerns. I, I hear, you know, I, people's concerns here, and I think they're perfectly valid. And, and maybe some more work, all of us together, including the, the city and the council and the, the existing homeowners, maybe we can do better than what's currently on the table. I'm generally opposed to just letting that sit empty and just saying, doggone it, you're going to sell it residential or you're not going to sell it. That's crazy. So I'm willing to, you know, at some future date to, to do some work. But another way to do it is to say, the concerns on the, what happens if they don't get the, whatever color that is, the salmon colored one, maybe you make that first and do the townhomes later. Is another reasonable approach to this. Change the phasing. But I don't think we're ready. I'm not ready to move forward to, to approve this tonight. I think there's a bit more work that needs to be done to allay some of the fears of the residents and to maybe push for something even better than, than what we currently got on the table. So that's, that's where I am on this.
If I, if I could say something, and I believe that they're both phase three, correct? There, so that possibly could take place as far as the commercial going before the residential.
Yeah, I think the, the idea was if I was living there, I'd say, great, show me X number of pads that are built or with a, you know, something, and then, you know, we'll go with it. But I don't want to design it for anybody or design this, but I'm saying, I just don't think we're ready to move forward as it sits tonight.
Any other commissioners wish to speak before I entertain a motion? Mr. Wilson, would you like to craft a, a motion?
Well, we can do this two ways. I would, I would prefer to just table this rather than, than to deny it. At this point, that would be my, have we lost counsel?
No.
Our attorney, my, my question is, is I would prefer personally to table this versus try to make a motion to deny. So, what would be your recommendation?
You can certainly table it to the next meeting and then you can consider bringing it back to the next meeting.
Well, I would table this until staff believes that there's been adequate meetings and that there's some adjustments made for it. It doesn't have to be next meeting, but in a future meeting.
I think that could be done. I think that could be done. You can bring, you can table it indefinitely and then bring it back.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Then I will move to table the amended MXT content plan, application 891 and the resolution that's associated with it, filed by Strip Matter Land LLC until the appropriate time when staff and the chair believe it's ready to move forward. And highly encourage the city to do everything in its power, including taking Mr. Smalls up on his offer to get proper notification and, and provide a venue for these folks to meet. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the rule.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thanks.
Additionally, actually, could I ask anybody who spoke tonight and didn't sign in if they could sign in by the door?
I believe there's a sign-in sheet at the back. If you would please take the time to sign in.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that way we can also follow up with each of you if, if we need to get any messaging. Moving on to agenda item five, text amendment number 251, ordinance number 1941. I'm going to read everything that is on the agenda for those watching, those here and those watching on TV. So Christian, you probably don't need to reread all of that, okay? So, agenda item five is text amendment number 251, ordinance number 1941, and ordinance of the mayor and city council to amend chapter 20, article 1, and ordinance to amend chapter 20, land development and subdivision, article 1, zoning, division 1 definitions, section 20-1.7, and division 5 zoning districts, section 20-6.13, to allow health campuses within the R1, R51 family detached, R551 family detached, and the RMD1 family detached, medium density zoning districts. Also to amend the acreage for hospitals of the city of Laurel Unified Land Development Code and providing an effective date, application filed by the mayor and city council. I will ask Ms. Pulley to please explain so that everyone can understand what this agenda item is. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission and council. Ms. Smalls, the proposed text amendment for ordinance number 1941 would amend chapter 20, division 1, definitions, section 20-1.7, and division 5 zoning districts, section 20-613, and section 6.23 of the Unified Land Development Code to permit health campuses within the R5 detached zone, R55 and the RMD zoning districts, which are all one family detached. Currently, the code does not allow for health campuses to be constructed in the city. The amendment will permit the structures in those zones just mentioned. Moreover, in order to construct a health campus, a detailed site and landscape plan to include all structures and uses upon the proposed property shall be approved by the planning commission and comply with the zoning regulations that are listed in the proposed ordinance. And some of those regulations include at least 20% of the health campus property shall be maintained as green area. Each building constructed upon the health campus, other than accessory structures, shall have a front, side, and rear yard of at least 25 feet setback and at least 35 feet from any yard but in a residentially zoned property. Excuse me. Lot coverage of the entire health campus shall not exceed 40%. And the subject property of the health campus shall contain a minimum of 20 contiguous acres. Also, within this text amendment, the code would change the acreage amount for a hospital. Currently, the code just say that it must sit on a parcel for 25 acres and we're making amendment to say 25 acres are larger. And that concludes the summation. And it is recommended that the planning commission recommend approval of text amendment number 251 to the mayor and city council.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Mr. Wilson?
So let me just, if people hear this at home, like when I first read it, when it says it's in the R5, unless it's 20 acre, whatever it is, 20 acres or larger, it's not a health campus.
That is correct.
So I can't build a Rick's Clinic or Bunions on Laurel Avenue where I live.
That is correct. The parcel has to be 20 acres or more.
Okay. Other than that, just, I'll ask this offline, never mind. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? I will entertain a motion.
Oh, okay, sorry. Motion to approve agenda item number five.
Just say the text amendment through.
Oh, text amendment number 251, ordinance number 1941.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item six, text amendment number 253, ordinance number 1942, and ordinance of the mayor and city council to amend chapter 20, and ordinance to amend the Laurel Unified Land Development Code, chapter 20, land development and subdivision, article 1, zoning, division 5 zoning districts, section 20-1.7, section 20-6.13, section 20-7.8 of the city code to allow for tourist homes as an accessory use within a single-family dwelling within certain residential and commercial zones and providing an effective date. Mr. Love?
Thank you. Not much time to sit down. Good evening once again, Madam Chair and commission members. The proposed text amendment 253, ordinance number 1942 is to allow a tourist home as accessory use within a single-family, one-family detached dwelling within the following zoning districts. The R5, the R55, the R20, the RT, the R30, the R18, the R10, the RMD, CNCC, CG, and CV. We're defining a tourist home as a single-family dwelling, one-family detached, where overnight lodging is provided for one or more paying visitors within a ma-, with a maximum of eight paying visitors at one time for no more than 30 consecutive days. The tourist home use is accessory to the principal use as a main dwelling. We have written up that a tourist home shall comply with the following. Must be located, one, must be located within a single-family dwelling, one-family detached, that is the permanent residence of the owner. Two, all tourist homes must obtain a tourist home license for this use, which must be applied for by the owner of the property prior to the issuance of this license. The premises must be inspected by the office of the fire marshal and permit services and approved, subject to any conditions deemed appropriate by the fire marshal or designated prior to the first night of occupancy for this use and every three years thereafter. Three, the tourist home license will expire, expire annually on July 1st, at which time the applicant has 30 days to renew the license. And four, one off-street parking space shall be provided per every four paying visitors staying at one time. The City of Laurel will maintain a database for all tourist home licenses, which will include but not limit to the following. The property owner's name, phone number, and email address, also the name, phone number, and email address for a designated emergency contact. The fire marshal shall be entitled to inspect the premises of any tourist home upon 24-hour written notice to the owner or immediately should an emergency condition be reasonably believed to exist. Should a violation be found to occur, the owner of the property may be cited for any such violations and the owner shall be given 15 days to correct the violation. If however, the violation involves an emergency condition that could, in reasonable judgment of the fire marshal, substantially threaten the health or safety of any residents or visitors within the premises, the violation shall be corrected as directed by the violation notice. The fire marshal may order the premise be vacated until the violation is corrected. Otherwise, if a violation is found to exist by the fire marshal and is not corrected within 15-day period, the fire marshal may issue a civil citation with a fine to be imposed at the set forth in the City of Laurel Unified Land Development Code, section 20-3.1. Failure to correct the violation within 30 days may result in the revocation of the tourist home license. Currently, the code does not allow for tourist homes. There are tourist homes that currently exist within the city. Staff wishes to create this use within these zoning districts in order to bring these into compliance as well as bring the code in line with other jurisdictions. It is recommended that the planning commission recommend approval of text amendment number 253, ordinance 1942 to the mayor and city council. Thank you.
Thank you. For those watching on television, I don't know whether you can tell, we don't have anyone sitting in the audience. I would have thought a packed house tonight for this agenda item. What we're talking about here is basically Airbnb rules for the City of Laurel. I compliment the staff and those working on it for starting to, to, to coming up with, with rules. I probably have a thousand questions. Obviously, I won't do those. But I would encourage us to make sure we're talking to people and if you've got any issues with this. So for example, eight people, eight paying people a night. I can't think of many houses in the City of Laurel where someone's private residence that eight people, paying people, I guess, if we're thinking of a family maybe, but could conveniently fit into someone's home. And so I'm not sure where the eight paying people for 30 nights and there's no, I think the eight is my number one question or kind of concern as to, is it eight people, is, I mean, houses have legitimate numbers of bedrooms when they're sold, when they're listed for tax purposes, for everything else. So is there any way that we can get something per the size of the home? For example, a rental property, when you're going to rent a property, there's a maximum number of people that fit in that house. So if, for example, a house on, you know, where I used to live, no more than six people could sleep there unless you're putting a bunch of air mattresses, so.
I'm sorry, if, we, we got the eight, eight actually came from the county's ordinance. That's where we got that number. But they would, with the fire marshal's inspection, that's where they'll determine exactly, you know, you have to have, it's got to be a legal bedroom for them to stay in there. So eight's the max. So there may be homes within the city that can comfortably, you know, illegally sleep the eight. But it's that, we're not saying have eight and you only have two bedrooms. You have people sleep on the floor, people sleep on couch. That's not the case.
So part of this licensing will actually be assigning and giving an approved number?
The fire marshal has to inspect the property, yes.
Okay. All right.
And will it limit, the other part of the question, will the fire marshal limit the number of guests that can stay?
They can legally do that, yes. They can say, this is as many people as you can have.
And that'll go in the database?
Yes.
Okay. So if someone's renting, they'll know that only, it's a place for two people?
Correct.
Now, it says that. Now, it says that it must be someone's private residence, but it doesn't require the homeowner to be there at the time, is that correct?
Correct.
So it's it could be one of the, you know, home swaps or things like that.
So, yeah, they could do that, but it does have to be, that's why we're very specifically made it, that it has to be the owner that comes in, that has to be their home, they have to be the one that applies for everything.
They don't have to live there?
It has to be their primary residence, yeah.
So I can designate a primary residence, right? I don't, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead. I I appreciate if you don't mind that we could kind of have this kind of discussions since it's just a, because again, I think it's a a great thing, but but to Rick's point, you can designate a primary residence and not live there, is that correct? Or under for tax purposes, you don't live there?
If I may speak to them.
Thank you.
Larry Tap City Solicitor. The issue of private residence is, I would say, akin to a domicile. And when you have a formal residence, every individual has a primary residence, a domicile. A domicile is a legal term for your legal residence for all purposes.
Right, but I can have a summer home in Ocean City.
You can have a summer home, sure.
And I can be there for one day less than six months.
This becomes, the problem is, this commissioner, this becomes a factual matter, and it's based on it's on a case by case basis.
Okay.
So I mean, you can come up with facts in any number of ways.
No, 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 but my question is, is if I do that, can I rent out my house for the summer here in Laurel?
If you're, well, first of all, I think we have limitations on the amount of time we can do, correct? So there's some limitations on through this in this legislation as to the amount of time you can do it, anybody can do it.
Per person, not per, that's what I was just going to ask.
If I'm out of the city for five months in the summer, living in Ocean City, and my primary domicile is here in Laurel, and I rent it out for those five months?
You can still rent it out under this legislation. I'm not sure, but the five months, there is a.
To five different people a month at a time.
Well, you can do it while you're, yes, as long as it remains your primary residence. I think that's the idea.
But there's no restriction that I have to be living there at the time.
No, no, that's correct.
That's where I was going, okay.
Thank you. And then my other question, homeowners associations within the city, if they have prohibitions, do their prohibitions trump the city regulation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they anything that they've signed into, we don't, that's part of.
Okay, that's that's what I thought. I thought, I mean, they they can't circumvent our laws with homeowners' rules, however, they can put more stringent requirements if it's within a.
When they agree to those rules, they legally agree to those rules, so they have to abide by them.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Welford?
I've heard a lot about fire inspections and other requirements such as that, but I haven't heard anything about would it be required to have a special insurance policy to have such a guest in your house like that, renting your house? Would that require more than the average person's insurance that they carry?
Not not through us in the city as far as what the what that would be. I believe, sometimes I think some of the the companies you go through actually might require like certain insurances that you had to go through.
But the city wouldn't ask for that kind of information prior to giving them a permit?
We we usually don't get into that, no.
And would there be a fee for this permit? I mean, I can see, oh, okay. Go ahead and answer that again. I talked right over you, but I would, I think that I was thinking, this can take up city resources getting this.
It would. We're currently trying to figure out a number. We think we might have something. It's going to be more than what the renter's license is, but there will be a solid, you know, starting fee, and then it'll be, there'll be a yearly fee as far as when you re-up and every year, you're going to have to pay that, probably half of what the starting fee is.
Thank you.
That's kind of what we're looking at, yeah.
Those were my questions. Like I say, I I think it's great that we are looking to to get something on the record.
And I.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, are any other cities, I mean, so if if you have a hotel, we charge a hotel tax, lodging tax, right?
Yeah, correct.
Are any other cities imposing a lodging tax?
I think Montgomery County might be doing something to that effect. I know Montgomery County, Prince George's County have passed it, I know Arlington did, and I know Gaithersburg is working on it currently. I think they may have had a transient tax possibly, that Montgomery County was.
I mean, we can make that up with the license, or we can do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we'll do. I mean, that's something we can look at with the actual license itself. We can look at, you know, do we want to do a tax of that, do we want maybe, that that would be with like the the permit process and so forth.
And then the other set of questions I have, it's just really one kind of thing. Enforcement on this is going to be tough. I mean, unless somebody calls and complains, which is like most ordinances in the city, right? But I mean, are is there a plan to go through these various online things looking? I did it today as part of going through my packet. I found a number of places that.
I got the numbers, yeah.
You know, I don't know how many there were actually in the city, but, you know, in the two of the zip code, there were a surprising number of places being advertised.
I actually, I counted, the problem with a lot of those, you have to be, I mean, you have to be registered in them and find them. They they keep it very, you know, and a lot of those sites, they'll say, you know, you have to abide by these rules or whatnot, but I know I counted, what, eight houses on Airbnb, six on HomeAway, and six on VRBO that were within city limits. With those and with the enforcement, that that's why we worked very closely with the fire marshal's office on this, and we we went through different iterations, and this is when he said, he goes, I can enforce this. That's his problem with a lot of the other ones. I won't name some of the counties, but we went through, he said, those are impossible to, and.
Okay.
And actually, I I used to enforce these when I was in another another jurisdiction, and it was something too broadly written where we were almost doing stakeouts at that point, and it's, and we won't need to do that in this case, and I I have confidence. And then kind of, I guess, keep in mind, you know, we're going to see how this works, and if we have to change it, we'll come back, we'll come back and amend it to.
Okay, I mean, I applaud the initiative to go ahead and get something. I just keep thinking, you know, I I talked to some folks today that that I know use Airbnbs, and my wife rents them, but we rent them like at a resort area, right, where, you know, it's a skiing place, we rent the whole house. So, you know, I I'm okay with it. The enforcement is one challenge, and then the the other challenge obviously is parking, you know, for me like, so as an example, I have no off-street parking at my house.
Then then you then you would not be allowed to have one.
Okay.
You have to, you have to have the driveway to be able to to be able to do it, so that's going to, that would limit it any more.
So at some point in time, before this goes into effect, the rules that the fire marshal will will enforce will get written up somewhere and say, you got to follow these if you're going to advertise as Airbnb or or.
They'll, they'll, yeah, they'll have their standard, you know, what they have now, which is with their homes, with their renter, I mean, it's going to be those sort of things. It's going to be, this is a legal bedroom, this is.
Okay, so somebody will be able to go somewhere and figure out if I'm going to do a room on one of these things, that these are the rules I have to, before the fire marshal even shows up.
Yeah, and that, and like I said, a lot of times a site will say, check your local, and sometimes they'll even have links to it, this is where it's going to be. And I mean, we'll provide, we could provide if, you know, they ask, we'll say, here's a link to ordinance, this is exactly what you have to abide by. We'll give them actually a copy of the ordinance when we do that, I'll have the fire marshal do that as far as, so they know exactly everything they have to go through, everything they have to meet at the time.
And then for those ten or twelve homes, however many you found, that are currently doing this, obviously legally, because there's no prohibition, how would we, what would we do with them? Just notify them that they have to jump through this?
If we can find them, we don't know where all of them are. A lot of times, we just know that, I just, when you look at those sites, it gives you kind of various areas, sometimes it just shows you inside how, it won't give you like an address. So it really, it is going to be, like you said, complaint based, that's where we're at. So if if we're hoping that draws them out to, okay, if I get called, it's going to be much worse than if I come out and and legally sign up for this, and that that's another part of it, is you you really want to do that. The one piece, like I said, was to be able to enforce it, which we feel we'll be able to enforce it. The second one was to hopefully bring those into compliance. We would like, they say this, okay, this will be easier as opposed to being completely shut down and not be able to do it, yeah.
So today, the city can't call up one of their, or write an official letter to one of those sites and and say, tell me these addresses?
They won't do it. They're very, it's, it's, I don't know who their legal team is, but.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Are there any other questions for staff? Hearing and seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve staff number, sorry, staff item number six, text amendment number two five three, ordinance number one nine four two.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Quillen?
Yes.
Ms. Bonner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Chairwoman Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.